Sure. Can I have your attention, please? We're gonna be starting up shortly. Good evening and welcome to the Lowell Planning Board for Thursday, September 20th, 2018. Tonight, we have two matters on the agenda. Public hearings. First one is a special permit for 25 Reed Street. An application was submitted by Talant Highbrow seeking special permit approval for the planning board and for variance from the zoning board of appeals to legalize the use of the property that has been operated as a three-family home at Reed Street. The building is located in a traditional neighborhood multi-family zoning district and requires special permit approval from the planning board under section 12.1 for three dwelling houses and requires a variance from the zoning board of appeals under section 5.1. Minimum lot size, minimum lot area per dwelling, minimum frontage, minimum side yard setback, a minimum rear yard setback, and maximum front yard setback for usable open space and off-street parking. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, great. So my name is Talant Highbrow. I'm here today because I purchased 25 Reed Streets on April of 2018. During the purchase, the bank required legal use determination for the building, so I had to involve the city inspector. He came in, took a look at the building, and came up with some requirements in order to call the building a legal three-family. Part of those requirements were to install emergency lighting, make all the doors self-closing, fasten stairways. And at the time, me, the bank, my agent that I was working with, the way we understood it is that if all this gets done, then we can move along and call it a legal three-family house. So I hired, the bank was able to give me the loan with this understanding. I hired an electrician. I did all the things that the city inspector asked me. And then when I called a couple of months ago saying that everything is ready to be inspected, he mentioned that I had to go in front of the zoning board before re-inspecting the building. So it looks like it was a misunderstanding at the time. The building had been used for at least the last two owners that I know as a three-family apartment. According to the inspection, the third floor was finished at some time, at some point, but it doesn't disturb anything for the rest of the building. There's egress, two exits.
Anything else you'd like to add?
That's it.
All right. Thank you. At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to see if anybody here and from the public wants to speak on this matter. Anybody here to see if they want to speak in favor of this project? Anybody in favor? In favor, in favor? Hearing none? Anybody in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none? This time, we'll turn it over to the board members. They have any questions?
I have one question.
Yes, Mr. Malovich.
Fire department, have they inspected the building? Have you gotten clearance from the fire department?
I'm not sure as a process, when you buy the house, is the fire, I believe the fire department is involved during the process.
They would do an inspection as part of the occupancy?
Okay, because it's going from a two to a three, that requires all the fire alarm systems and everything.
Yep.
Okay. The other question I had is, where do you go to store the snow? Or where's the snow storage on site?
So on the right side of the building, there is a area that it's not being used. On the right side, there's nothing there. It's not like, it's not a driveway or a walking way, or it's just an unused space that you can...
It's very wide. How are you gonna get the snow in there?
With a hand snow blower, I guess, and not using a big truck, if you will.
Okay, I know that the other house on that side is pretty close to the fence.
That's correct.
I would be concerned if I was that owner of putting snow along there. Damage to my property. That would certainly be a concern of mine. And I also concerned there's no usable open space on this property. You have three tenants of at least one or two people each, and if there's any kids living in that property, where are they gonna play? I'm not a big fan of correcting problems of illegality in the past because someone used it as a three-family. I don't think we should go out of our way to help you make it a three-family legally when all these deficiencies are on that property. It's just stuffed in between two other buildings. I'm not inclined to approve this. That's just my take on it.
Thank you, Mr. Malovich, okay?
My only comment on that is that I don't think, like, let's say the snow situation, I don't think you would make a difference if the house is a two-family or a three-family. It's gonna be the same amount.
It's not about the snow. It's just about all the deficiencies, physical deficiencies on the property. You're not meeting a majority of the dimensional requirements of the code, and the building's just stuffed in there. There's no benefit to the tenants, and even the parking is substandard. So I'm just not a...
No, I understand.
...fan of that. I'm a professional planner, and I don't think we should continue to let people, you know, all matters just because other parts of the neighborhood may have gotten relief in the past. That's just my opinion. I don't speak for the rest of my fellow members.
The other way I look at it, and I mean, is City of Lowell, I see it as developing. Like, one of my tenants is, they moved from Lynn because Lynn was very expensive, and I think the demand for apartments in the City of Lowell is high. So that's another thing. It's good for me, but it's good for the City of Lowell, if you will, too. And the other thing is when I was, this is my first investment property, it's not that I have a bunch of them. And when I bought it, there was a misunderstanding between what the city inspector said at the time and how we understood it. We thought that this was a legal three-family after I would do those things to go up to the code that I mentioned earlier.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malovich. Mr. Feshet, any questions? Yes, I'll go to Mr. Snetsky. Where must go next?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, to Mr. Malovich's point, I think that's one of the difficulties with this application is it, the property itself doesn't meet any of the existing zoning. And even the driveway, at first approach, it appears that you have fair amount of off-street parking, but it's stacked parking. I believe the right, the opening is greater than the zoning requirement. And somebody paved, you know, beveled it to the curb. The curb's still there. They ignored the curb, and they paved it into the street so you can get up over the curb. So obviously, that's a concern. And, you know, it becomes a difficult thing. I'm looking at the special permit criteria for the character of the neighborhood, and certainly it's very dense there. But we certainly don't want to make the situation worse. And it would appear that somebody put an apartment in there illegally, or didn't pull, obviously didn't pull the proper permits because there was no record of it. And that's why you're required to apply for the variances. You know, the chairman read it off. I think you need a variance for every basically dimensional requirement of the property. It's, as a two-family, then the parking works because the tandem, the tandem parking, the stacked parking is allowable in a single and a two-family. However, in a three-family, that's really, it's not allowable under the zoning. And then I know, looking at the comments from staff, a lot of the open space, and we do this frequently, we look at public parks as options, but the parks that were cited were across the VFW Highway. And although you can even see the dog park from there, it's, you're crossing the VFW Highway for the, for any kind of recreational space. It's difficult. I understand the dilemma that you find yourself in. And I come from the world of financing, and it happens more often than it should in the city. You know, an appraiser goes out to the property, doesn't want to really say it's illegal, but says they can't find any proof that there was a permit for the third unit, and then wants some sort of a clarification. It's usually, you mentioned the lender, and they probably reached out to you and said they had an appraisal and couldn't, they could substantiate the legality of the third unit, and you went to get some clarification. And it looks like, obviously, there was some miscommunication with the final results of that. You know, I, there was also mention here of an easement on the property. Can you explain a little bit about that? Because I wasn't quite sure the impact that that, it appears that that could have an additional negative impact on the property. Did you see this memo from?
I did, yes, yes. So I don't know how easements work, because I'm not very familiar with the law. But I guess the concern there was if the neighbor would have to rebuild that house, I don't know legally if he could use that easement. In that case, that would block, that would create a bottleneck in the property. But I'm not...
There isn't an easement that exists currently.
Correct.
Correct. Christine, can you elaborate a little bit on that as far as?
To your question?
Yes, yeah, regarding the easement, as far as...
So I do think the easement is recorded over both properties, and both properties have the right to use it.
Yep.
But the largest part of the driveway is on the adjacent property. I have not reviewed the easement language.
Right. So the largest part of the parking area that we're looking at is in the easement area?
Of the existing driveway, not the proposed new one.
So the largest space is of 25 Reed Street. There's only a small part that it's an easement.
So really, what we're looking at is, yeah, okay. So that's why, right now, it looks wider than it is.
It's a shared driveway.
Only one piece on the left side of the driveway is considered an easement. That was my understanding.
Okay.
Given the shape, I haven't read the easement, but given the shape of the 25 of this property,
Yep.
I would assume that that's a shared driveway, and the easement is reported against both properties, so both property owners can use it?
Mm-hmm.
That's my understa, that would be my best guess of what that parking easement is for. But it is, the opening and majority of that driveway does not, is not on this property. But he has rights to pass over, is my guess.
I think it's the other way around. So when you look at the parking lot in there, you can see the line that separates the parking spot for Reed Street, for 24, 25 Reed Street, and the one that is in the easement area. Like, the asphalt is, there's a line there.
Yeah, I can see that. I actually have a, I was up there today, took a picture of it. But from the line, it looks like it actually goes at an angle, and it actually goes in front of your property on the left-hand side. It narrows to 20 feet. Oh, right here. Here it is, right here. Oh, yeah, here it drives, yeah, right there. Yeah. Yeah. So what happens is the 20, your property and the property next door, 27, it looks like you're close to almost identical slices of a pie. So you get wider towards the rear of the property, narrower towards the front, and then they get narrower towards the rear of the property and wider towards the front.
So on the map, on the drawing that we see here,
Right.
You can only see two cars, but there's, this is wider, it's four.
Oh, I understand that, yeah.
The planning is right, you fit the four?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, that's the challenge here. I think, you know, anybody that, whoever put in that apartment, they would have had to go through what you're going through right now. They would have had to go to the zoning board of appeals for all the variances that we're looking for and the special permit at this point. So I'll reserve further comment based on other colleagues that have not spoken. But that's, and I know you find yourself in a very tough spot here. But...
Just with a purchase to begin with, and then with the rest of the money that I've done to bring it up to code as I was required,
Right, right.
Then coming in here, that has a price tag as well, obviously.
Right, no, I certainly understand. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Feshet. Mr. Snetsky?
Mr. Chairman, it appears that someone else would wish to speak.
Sure. You want to cut the microphones, heard, and state your name and address for the record?
Good evening, your honor. I'm sorry, I came in a little late. I am the neighbor, I'm the owner of 27 Reed Street.
Okay, to the, okay.
What number, sir?
27.
2729.
He's the one, if you look directly at it to the left.
Yeah. So I'm kind of worried with, how is this gonna work out? Because if tomorrow I choose to make it a three-family for my own building, or two, or four families, I'm kind of worried where we're gonna have parking around that area. Because those buildings are very similar, and, you know, it's kind of a little congested. I'm not sure how, but not impacting on his decision about what he wants to do. He's my neighbor. But I'm just kind of, you know, looking to it and see how this can work out.
So is that a, do you, so this driveway here?
Yes.
That you and he both use together?
Yeah, I have a little driveway next to, yeah.
So he's allowed to pull through this driveway as well, then?
Yeah.
Okay. So you use this driveway as well to get back here?
I use the driveway here, but I think towards the end of it, we have to share because it goes into boot property, I think.
Right. Right. So the only parking he has would be the four in the front?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, okay. But the driveway lets him go through there, but he really doesn't have any reason to go too far in the driveway because of the fact that
Yeah, yeah.
You're here, right?
Yes.
He can drive up there, but he can't park there.
Yeah.
So you park up here?
I don't really go right in there. I park next, like, towards the front.
Toward the front?
Yeah. Yeah, I parked next to my building, to my aunt's
Okay.
Building, yeah.
I got you. Yeah, all right. Okay. Anything else you'd like to say, sir?
Well, as I said, you know, I'm just wondering if tomorrow we should make my aunt say three families. I would need to come back here to talk about it, and my worries are how we're gonna get space for parking in this area.
Yeah. So what happened was someone made the three family illegally. He ended up buying and not knowing it. Now he's stuck. So... Anything else you'd like to add?
No.
No? Okay. Thank you, sir. Back to you, Mr. Snetsky. Thank you.
Okay. I do have some empathy for your situation here, sir. You know, I do believe that you were trying to do the right thing, and somebody dropped the ball in getting you the correct information about the determination of use. I would look, you know, to the attorney that handled it, quite frankly, whether it had been, was for you, or the bank, or whatever. But that's water over the dam now. So what do we do? Unfortunately, we see way too many of these situations come before us. And how many is too many? Well, we do one more, we do one more, we do one more. And, you know, we're really violating the intent of the zoning code. But again, like I say, I'm trying to find a way to help you here, you know, and it's a very difficult situation. I mean, I look at the building, and I see the mailboxes. I mean, one mailbox has five names on it, one has three, and one has two. I mean, that's a significant number of people. So that, those four spaces that you have there, I would tend to believe are not adequate to service that property. That being said, you know, if we were even to approve that permit for you, a special permit for you here tonight, you still have major hurdles to cross with the zoning board of appeals. So, you know, this would not be the end of the line, even if we were to say yes. I mean, if we say no, it is the end of the line. So in the interest of, you know, having some empathy for your situation, I would propose that we approve the permit conditional upon you receiving all required variances from the ZBA, as well as meeting all the conditions outlined by the building inspector. So that gives you one last shot, you know. But again, you know, I, I find it very frustrating that we find these situations repeatedly. And I'm just, you know, trying to be as fair as I can, you know, and still protect the interests of the city and the neighborhood. So that would be my proposal.
Thank you very much for that. And also, what I wanted to add is, I know that property has been used illegally as a three-family for a while, but I wanted to do the right thing when I came in. I wanna play by the rules and...
Which is why, you know, and I realize you're in a difficult situation, which is why, the only reason that I would entertain approving it conditionally on you getting all the other zoning relief you need. You know, like I say, to give you one last shot. So that would be my proposal, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Snetsky. Now, the one thing I do, I look at the whole street. And you look at 17 Reed Street, units, does not meet code. 23 Reed Street, four units, does not meet code. 26 Reed Street, three units, does not meet code. 27 Reed Street, two units, does not meet the code. 30 Reed Street, one unit, still doesn't meet the code. 33 Reed Street, six units, doesn't meet the code. 34 Reed Street, one unit, doesn't meet the code. 36 Reed Street, three units, doesn't meet the code. I mean, 36 Reed Street has 2,990 square feet. You have 2,790 square feet, so you're not much different from somebody with a three-family, only a few blocks away, I mean, a few houses away from you, because you're at 25, that's at 36. So I know they don't meet the code. I know you get stuck with it because you didn't build it. If you did build it, then I would say, too bad, but since you came in trying to do the right thing, I'd be willing to go along with Mr. Sneski's recommendation. That's only me personally. But I know you're trying to do the right thing, but you'd have to meet all the various approvals by the zoning board of appeals. Your relief is much greater there than what you're requesting from us, but if we look at the neighborhood up there, the other neighbors fall in, all those other streets I mentioned, I mentioned, fall in the same situation they are. None of them meet code limits at all either. None of them have the lot size, none of them have the lot area. So in a way, it's kind of consistent with the neighborhood. So I'd be willing to go along with Mr. Sneski's recommendation. I don't know what the other board members feel, so. Those are only my comments. So it is a special permit. However, you do need four votes. Mr. Requested the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit conditional upon the applicant receiving all required variances from the ZBA, as well as meeting all the requirements of the building department.
I'll second the motion. Motion is made in second.
Mr. Chairman, can we just, for discussion?
Sure, absolutely.
I think you make an interesting point. Under the criteria of the special permit, one of the elements we're looking at is, is the neighborhood character. The ZBA in, in granting the variances are looking at the technical aspects of the application. We're looking as to how it fits within the character of the neighborhood, and you do point to the information that was provided by DPD, which really does make it very clear that the homes in the immediate area, it's not even going much of a stretch beyond the address of the subject property. I think just about every abutting property and then contiguous property to that, to the, to the subject property does not meet current zoning. And there's also, there's a six-family, there's a four-family, couple, three families, and the two, and even the singles don't. And I think of, of those properties, I think there's several that don't even have a driveway. Or if they do, it's not as, not as large as this one. Even though there's some challenges there. I guess based on that, I, I certainly would go along with the, the motion, also, you know, stressing that the, the real technical requirements are going to be looked at by the, the zoning board of appeals. If we're looking at the special permit as it relates to the neighborhood character, again, I think the chairman makes a good point that it's feeling consistent with what we're looking at in the immediate area. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we have a motion made in second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody in opposition? No. So you got your four votes, and now you have to go to, back to, to the zoning board of appeals. So they're the ones who are going to decide whether you have the side yard, whether you have the parking and everything else. We were just deciding whether, if we thought this fit in the neighborhood with everybody else, and goes to show that everybody else doesn't have the same lot with, I mean, doesn't have the same requirements to zoning as you do, so it's, in my opinion, it's consistent. So now you have to go to the zoning board of appeals, and wish you well there, sir. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Have a good night. Thank you. Okay, moving along on the agenda. The next matter is a site plan review for Two Prince Ave, One Markley Way. The applicant was submitted by the Markley Group LLC Site Plan Review Approval to expand the data center, including constructing a 60,500-square-foot building parking lot and stormwater management system at Two Prince Ave, One Markley Way. The property is in the Alight Industrial Zoning District and requires site plan review under Section 11.42 and any other relief required under low zoning ordinance. As far as background, they were here early in September for a, for applications meeting, as a result, which was on September 10th. As a result of that, on September 11th, the planning board did a site visit. Members of the planning board who were present were myself, Mr. Vichet, Mr. Lockhart, Mr. Sneski, and Mr. Malovich. We also had Patrick Burns and Jared L. from our planning staff, as well as the applicant, his attorneys, and representatives on their behalf. Having said that, may we open the applicant, please?
Mr. Chairman, board members. George C. Alides Jr., 133 Market Street, Lowell, and I'm here this evening in behalf of the Markley Group. So to begin with, I just want to, the old story of openness and whatever, just thank the board for allowing me to put my remote microphone up front there, so that no one thinks I'm trying to do anything special or different or underhanded or whatever. But as you know, and I think you've known for some time, I wear two hearing aids, and this is a great assist to me, and I thank the board for that. So I'm here this evening with my associate, George Theodoro, Attorney, 133 Market Street, my right-hand project man, Mr. Cahill, and representatives of the Markley Group, who will give you a little more information than I, with regard to the project at hand. So the Markley Company is looking to build another new building on the site. You will well recall, and you've all seen, a property that's over 14 acres in the heart of the city, and a, and a somewhat residential neighborhood on one side, and, and light industry and whatever around other areas. When the Markley Group made its first presentation, it was sort of an unknown, you folks can sit down, because I'm going to take about five minutes, and I don't want you getting tired. They, they went into what was actually an almost unknown site to the rest of the world, because it was closed off. It was the old Prince Spaghetti site. It was also the site of one of the worst dumps in the city, illegal informal dumps, used cars that were demolished, God knows what they put into Hales Brook beside it. The property had run into complete disrepair. The neighborhood in, in some portions were, there were things going on that no one was too happy about. And so Mr. Markley made a presentation of the board and said what he wanted to do, what he hoped to do. This is a company that's an internationally famous company by going in many places, not just in the United States, but out of the country, and building properties that house an incredible amount of computer equipment, as you folks saw, as well as various support systems to help in the operation of that. So from the very, now if you go up and take a look at the property, which this board was kind enough to make a site visit and get a better onsite view of what's taken place since that initial filing, you, from the very beginning, you see at Prince Avenue when you walk in, or you drive in, and to get to drive in, as you know, it's a very, very, very secure spot, because on that property are literally tens of millions of dollars of equipment that is used and very important to big corporations all over America. I like to say that all of these companies have now become familiar with Lowell, Massachusetts, and I can't give you the whole litany of who they are, but I'll tell you that if you're watching Netflix tonight and you get turned off, it'll go on again because the backup systems for Netflix, their entire group are, are, are on that site now. So what, what Mr. Markley wants to do now is, instead of working on the old building, he needs to get going fast, and he's proposing this roughly 40,000-plus square foot building, because the demand for his service has, has happened so quickly, and we're bringing more and more people to, to Lowell, more and more properties and projects. So we're hopeful that, from the standpoint of what everybody's seen, I, I imagine the, the things like the just hundreds of new trees and, and things that have beautified the, the area there, to say that the turnaround of the site is, is near, in my opinion, spectacular, would be an understatement. So I'm not going to spend a lot more time. I've got representatives of the Markley Group here, they're architects, engineers, and whatever, and I'm going to let Barbara start off with a little site plan review for you. And I'll, I and my group will be ready and answer questions for you.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, and good evening. So you brought, this is an exhibit here?
If you, if you want, you can take one of those microphones, and just push the green button, and it should amplify a little bit. Thank you very much. Just state your name, please.
Sure. Barbara Nazarevic with Stentec, landscape architect. So we brought, as an exhibit, we brought rendered plans. This one on the left here is the previously approved plan, and then here on the right is the current proposed plan. So you probably noticed that majority of the plan looks very similar to what we originally proposed. The biggest change that we are asking for is this proposed building four, which is in dark gray, in the center of the, of the plan. Buildings two and three have been already completed, and building one is the, the original building that is being, in the process of being refurbished. So because of the proposed building four, we are planning on shrinking this parking lot here slightly and thus redistributing the parking throughout the site to still provide the, you know, the required amount of parking. You, in your initial comments, there was a request for providing a fire truck sweep path, which we did provide, and so the fire trucks can access the buildings. We are planning on continuing the same sort of approach to storm mitigation and, and providing planting throughout the site. So I'm trying to think if, what questions you might have about the, the plan at this point. If, if there aren't any, I can hand it off to, to the architect, who can talk more about the building, which is the, the main change, really.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ben Williams with SDI Architecture, and the new proposed building, we were, we're looking at putting it into, right into where the, where the other buildings currently exist, into the corner there. So one, trying to utilize the site and pulling away from the perimeter of the site and the neighbors. The other one is with this very large building that's over 80 feet tall, trying to, working on designing a structure that helps break down that, that mass of that building. And so when you enter the site, we're building is going to be around the corner from where, from what a lot of the neighbors would see, but also the neighbors that will see into the site. We're starting to break down that, the big massive building, so it's not such, such a mass in the site. Since our last count, since we last met, you will notice we have placed mechanical equipment on the roof. Since then, the engineers have determined the best use, best way to cool this. Day one, it's going to be one piece of mechanical equipment, the other two actually for the other building. And part of that reasoning of looking at it, putting it here is, with the 80-foot built, 80-foot tall building, do we really want to put more stuff on top of that roof and make it go higher? So we're trying, we're looking at future for this building, being able to put some of the mechanical equipment on this building as well. So that's why you see the three large chillers on this building. There's, since we last spoke, there's not really much other changes, but you have the main entrance. As you come in to, as you come around Prince Street into the site, you get the view of the entrance. As you come up, the entrance is set back, and a little bit taller of a building, and this, this new entrance will allow access to all levels of the existing building, as well as the new building as well. And, and it's mostly open data center space that's being put in there, with some offices on the first floor. Any questions at the moment?
Not this time. Thank you.
So I, I guess I can say that's the basic site plan and, and the environs that we're talking about, dealing with the conservation commission, of course, dealing with the planning department all along from step one, and so we're prepared to answer any questions the board may have after hearing from any other remonstrance as far as we're concerned.
Okay. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you for the opportunity.
At this point in time, I'll turn over to the public. Anybody here to see, do you want to speak in favor of this project? In favor? In favor? In favor? Here and then? Anybody in opposition? You state your name and address, please, for the record?
Yes, it's Jake Forts, and it's 36 Iowa Street on the south side of Butter to the property. It's not really for or against. It's just numerous questions upon reviewing their multiple site plans that they've submitted over the years that I have first, that I would like them to answer and address, and then I would like to address you the body with regards to the project. So with that said, there was a lot of technical analysis that apparently wasn't done on the first site plan that was done in 2015. A lot of stuff has happened since then. Question one is, I don't recall seeing a swept path analysis for the current emergency access road at the end of Prince Ave. Why wasn't this done to ensure that the current emergency access was adequate?
So you can ask questions to us, and if we want to be firm to them, we can. This is not a debate between you. But I didn't, why was there, what plan? What was the plan going on?
A swept path analysis. The traffic, yeah, the traffic engineer required them to do it this time. However, at the...
We had comments last time from the traffic engineer. Go, go ahead. Yep.
Yep. So the current plan doesn't have the entryway there. They're modifying the current plan, and I don't know why they're doing that. At the foot of Iowa Street and Prince Ave, they plan on putting an emergency entrance. That's not there. They led the, they led the residents of South Lowell to believe when they took Markley Way, what is now known as Markley Way, that the emergency entrance was adequate, but now somehow or other, that has changed. If you see on the larger plan, in the lower left-hand corner at the foot of Iowa Street, there is an emergency access route there. That poses a, a big problem for my neighborhood, and that has to do with another follow-up question that I wanted to ask, is how is that gate going to operate? Will it be swung in manually, or will it be operated from the guardhouse, which even in that diagram isn't correct, because the guardhouse is not in the center of the roadway, it's actually on the right-hand side of it? That site plan that you have before you is not accurate, and that's one thing that I wanted to bring up. There's a couple of holes in it, one being that the guardhouse, that entryway doesn't look anything like it is in reality. I don't know if you guys caught that or not. Now, I was also looking to have an explanation as to why the Markley Group reclaimed property on Prince Ave when they put in a perimeter fence as part of their Phase One project. They actually took back property that had been in public domain for more than two decades, so as part of adverse possession by the city. That was used by Prince Ave tenants, as you know, there's tenants on Prince Ave. That was used by tenants to mitigate parking issues there. They moved the fence back to the property line, taking that land back. However, in doing so, they've created a traffic problem. Now, if you see where they're putting that proposed gate, there's going to be less area for them to park, because now they've been parking all along that side, because they pinched the other side of Prince Ave when they made it a dead end and pushed out the property line. So they've caused a parking issue in my neighborhood as one of the issues that they've done since they've come to town. So I would like the board to try and figure out what the Markley Group plans on doing to mitigate that issue, and why they're moving that gate to that side of the property, and why the existing one is no longer valid. So that's another one. I'm trying to figure out what the purpose of the boxes on the north side of the property are. are beside the diesel generators. There's, their original plan called for thirty diesel generators to be installed on the north side of the property, and for whatever reason, we found four in our backyard after you guys did the initial site plan approval back in 2015. Now, I've been told, not by Luke, I don't want to disparage him, it was actually by the previous guy, Lou of the Pack, we would constantly hear that the situation is fluid. The situation is fluid. Now, mind you, when they first came to town, the original plan that you see before you isn't the one that's on the left-hand side, and that's not what they posted either. So, what I want to do tonight is actually give you guys what we, as residents, saw. And this was actually posted. So, the top page is what we, as residents, were led to believe would happen, and that was actually posted outside their gate, which is the second page. So, that's why you can understand that they're probably some frustration by some of the residents to the south side that you suddenly see.
Could you give the applicant a copy, please, so he can try to help respond to your questions?
Yep.
Sure.
So, that's why you can see from the top two sheets, that's what was posted. That's what the neighborhood led, was led to believe was going to occur. I was a hundred percent fine with that. Did you see me three years ago? No, you did not. Why? Because I was fine with that. All the diesel generators were supposed to be on the north side of the property. That's what they led us to believe. They led us to believe a lot of things when they came to town. And that's why I want to point out page three of the actual handout that I just gave you, because when they came to town, it was with some, an understanding that apparently their reasons for coming was to mislead the neighborhood. Because here's an email from August twenty-fifth, 2015, from Mr. Aliades, their attorney, indicating that the subject came up of breaking off Markley Way in Prince Ave before the site plan review, before they came to you. However, he insisted that you do nothing, that we do nothing, the Markley Group do nothing, that might rile up the neighborhood until after the site plan review had been secured, so he could start building. So, not only did he mislead our neighborhood, he misled you on top of it. And that's why, since then, since that date, I didn't come in originally, because I was fine with the plan. Right after that, everything started to change, and I have spent more time than not fighting the Markley Group in changes in my neighborhood. Most of it is not owner-occupied, and I think that he's very well aware of that. However, I'm an owner-occupant, and I'm not happy with the situation that I've been dealt. The generators were supposed to be on the north side of the property. The two that I think somebody from the Planning Board did see on the south side of the property, they come on when we lose power. We've lost power more often than not lately, and that's because National Grid has underestimated the power demands that they need for what they're trying to put in there. The infrastructure can't support them, and that's basically what we found out, because we keep getting plunged into darkness. We've been plunged into darkness more times than not in the last three years than in the last twenty years combined. I reached out to National Grid to try and get you specific statistics tonight. However, I was not able to get them in time. But that's just something I wanted to bring up to you. If they had left the generators on the north side of the property where they had been and hadn't tried to take the street under the pretenses that they did, I wouldn't be here, and I would have saved a whole heck of a lot of time. And as Mr. Aliades knows, I've been at almost just every meeting pretty much since the original Planning Board ones, because this is what I've had to deal with. I don't think it's very fair to the community what's been done here, but, you know, that's for you guys to decide. But basically, there's more questions that I have here. Whoever went along the back south side of the property, the landscaping, which I know seems to be a big thing, and I've heard it a lot at Planning Board meetings, the landscaping along Markley Way, what they've done with it is actually quite good. And I complimented Luke on this last week, and I, I know that they rarely hear compliments from me, because, you know, they've riled up the neighborhood. So, the landscaping on the west side of the property, everything looks great. Now, that's basically what the clients come in and see. That's what you came in and saw. Doesn't it look great from an entry perspective? Of course, it looks great. Now, if you go round the south side of the property on that access road, as I'd made mention to the Conservation Commission last week, that basically there's no landscaping back there, and until about two weeks before your first meeting, there was overgrown weeds there. They were cut down, because I believe a counselor got in touch with somebody and basically said to them, hey, you need to get rid of this. They only went as far as behind our house and around the Iowa Street area. They didn't actually continue around to Andrew Street until last week, when another person from the Conservation Commission meeting came up and said that she looked at the corner of Otis and Born, and said, why didn't you do over there? So, they, this past weekend, went and cut those down. However, the shrubbery that is supposed to be there as part of the Phase One project doesn't exist. So, we're on to trying to build more things, and we haven't delivered on what we were supposed to deliver on to begin with. Now, I know that it shows an equipment well on the original plan that I gave to you on the first page there. It does show an equipment well. However, the little blocks that you see that I highlighted in pink, that was all the diesel generators. They were all supposed to be up there. The equipment well to the south, if they want to install all the coolant fans that they wish to down there, that's white noise. It doesn't pollute. You turn on those diesel generators, and even though they're going to tell you that they're Tier Two EPA compliant, which now I've suddenly become some sort of an expert in EPA compliance, that that's okay for a residential neighborhood? Sure it is. However, when you look at it, it's a public nuisance, which under DEP guidelines states that those generators should be moved. They shouldn't be anywhere near residences, and they should have never been put there to begin with. The Conservation Commission said, hey, you guys might want to mitigate this, put carbon filters on them. That would be a great idea. Whether or not they're actually going to do that, I don't know. It was a suggestion by the Conservation Commission last week. Why I'm here today is basically just because I've done so much in the last three years and spent so much time on this. I just wanted to give you guys a basic rundown of, you know, where I've been. So, there were no changes readily made to the public for public viewing, and no public hearings on the proposed site changes after you guys did the original plan back in 2015, which is what you're staring at, what I gave you. That's the original plan. What you see over here on the left-hand side was not the original plan. That's not what the neighborhood was told, and that's why I'm here tonight, is basically to say, watch them. Because whatever, we need to have Phase One fixed, we need to have what they promised done first, and then move on. Because basically, I can't trust them anymore. And that email right there that I gave you tonight is part of that trust issue. Now, the Markley Group said, you know, basically that they were going to come in and, you know, the positive impacts to the neighborhood and everything else. I can attest to you, that positive impact hasn't really materialized. I even heard Mr. Aliades tonight use it as a reason to, you know, say, please endorse this project. That really hasn't happened. What they did was that they come in and made a private entryway, so that their prospective clients wouldn't see Prince Ave, which is the connecting road to Iowa Street where I live. Prince Ave has not changed. The demographics has not changed. The only thing that has changed there is that the Markley Group got in with, I don't know who it was, I think it was the Code Enforcement Department, to have two of the buildings that were run down renovated that faced that Markley Way. But the same owner owns the other two on the other side of Prince Ave. No changes were done. I stare at a dumpster that's constantly overflowing that they moved over there. Their, their clients don't see that at all. They haven't done anything to actually better uplift the neighborhood. They said that they were going to help secure the neighborhood. We were going to have security. No. The security is only for their property. There are still nefarious activities that go on on Prince Ave. Nothing's changed. It's still the same rough neighborhood. They just wanted to cut the street off and use that as an excuse, and said they would help the neighborhood. No, they haven't. We still have the same stuff going on. And if anything, that cutting it off has actually made the parking situation on Prince Ave even worse. Now, we've put up with a lot, and I, I know that it sounds like I'm going on, but it has been a lot, and I, you guys need to be aware of this. Basically, when they first came to town, between 2015 and 2016, they violated the noise ordinance multiple times with heavy equipment before seven AM. They moved dirt piles all over the property. They currently sit on the backside of the property, on the eastern side of the property. And they weren't covering them, they weren't keeping them down, so that basically whenever there was a nice windstorm, my car would be covered in dirt. I abut on the south side, and usually the winds blow from north to south. Now, there was constant vibration by the abutting property, you know, right to the south of where they were when they were putting in the access road. I get that they had to pound down the soil to make it, you know, decent enough to put it, the access road in. But it was, it was like having a mini earthquake in your house every day that they were doing it. And it would shake all day long, and you'd come home and sometimes find things knocked off shelves, because that's how much of vibration they were doing right behind your house. Now, the taking of Prince Ave and Markley, or what is now known as Markley Way, that was an emergency access route to get to our neighborhood when the corner of Gorman and Moore Street would flood. Every major rainstorm, it still floods. The city of Lowell promised us that they were going to take care of the vacuum suction right down at the major corner, which is kind of like grayed out, but if you look at the very left-hand side of that diagram, that was supposed to be promised to us, that they would do everything possible to keep it open during major rainstorms. It still floods, and now the solution is, is to go around New All Street, which is essentially a one-way street, because there's parking on both sides, and you can't pass. You have to do one lane going and coming. So, that was their solution, was, oh, it'll inconvenience you, but you can go around that way. It's a major inconvenience, because you can't clearly get through there, and to have a whole bunch of traffic trying to go both ways on a street that allows parking on both sides, it just doesn't work. We've put up with that more times than not, because every major rainstorm, it floods. We've had mine, the corner of, right down there is Mineki Muffler on the corner of Gorman and Moore Street. They actually had a fire there, and they shut it down, the corner there, and we couldn't get around the neighborhood. Every time a box truck gets stuck underneath the Gorman Street Bridge, which is right there, the Spaghettiville Bridge, they shut down the intersection again. As you can see, we needed that roadway, and we've put up with it. I mean, they've won the battle, but just to let you know, this is what neighborhood residents are dealing with. Now, the south side, we saw the road, and, you know, we, it's good that they have the road in there, but the landscaping still hasn't been done. I mentioned about the electricity issues that we've been having. If they can bring in more electricity, which is, my understanding, they're actually, they were just approved for another power pole to get power from another substation, that would be great. The only problem is, is that that's to mitigate the issues that they're having currently with the amount of square footage that they have. And as I believe the Stantec gentleman said, building number one, which is the large building, the existing building, they still haven't done anything with that. So, when they go to put that online, we're going to probably be plunged into darkness again, because National Grid's not ready for it. They weren't ready for them when they put in the first, the new building, Two and Three, and we've already had issues with power, and they're bringing in more. When they bring that online, and now they want a fourth building, I don't think our neighborhood can support it, not unless there's significant upgrades, which I don't see happening. Now, another thing that happened was when they went to put in the perimeter fence along the south side at Prince Ave, it's only installed from basically where that new gate is going to go. If you can see at the bottom corner, that, from there until right behind Two Iowa Street. And it was at that time that they discovered that there's actually a sewage pipe that goes across their property. Now, the sewage pipe is on private property the whole way until it connects into Prince Ave. Somehow or other, the Markley Group has arranged for the city of Lowell taxpayers to have it shifted away from their property, and it's actually going on right now. That construction is going on in my neighborhood this week. Now, they're getting it shifted off their property, however, it's on private property the whole way up Iowa Street. Nobody offered to do it for us. Why the double standard? They actually collapsed our sewer pipe when they put that fence in. That's even better. So, neighborhood residents had to deal with sewage backing up into their houses. So, as you can see here, my basic point is, is they haven't been very neighborly since they came in. Now, if they had kept what their original plan, I would have been fine with it, and I would have saved a lot of time, as I made mention before. So, what I'm asking you guys to do is basically split this up into phases, because I can't trust them, and I don't think you guys should either. Split it up. Phase One hasn't been completed. Make them do Phase One. And that means finishing the south side of the property the way it's supposed to be done. Phase Two would be that they installed the utilities as they made mention to in this site plan. That means doing whatever they want to do on the eastern side of the property, finishing the landscaping, putting in the equipment yard in the north side of the property, which was where it was supposed to be to begin with, putting that there, and then finishing up whatever they need to do on the rest of the property before building, building number Four. That's the only way to hold these guys accountable, because the situation is so fluid, as they've continued to tell me, you can't trust them. It's like, once you give them card blank, now you see what we've had to deal with for the last three years. It needs to be slowed, it needs to be done in phases, and it needs to be this way. I kindly ask of you to please do this for the sake of our neighborhood, because we're getting steamrolled by an international company. It's like, I know they're international, I know they've got deep pockets, however, we're the community that they chose to buy into, and there's actually owner-occupants that still exist there. If we can get this done the way it should be, then hopefully we'll mitigate the problems going forward. The proposed plan, the way it sits now, if they were to be generous enough to move the diesel generators from the south side to the north side to mitigate the fume issues that we have, that would be even better. However, at this point, I just, I want you guys to slow them down, because they need to be slowed down. It needs to be done in phases, so then that way there, there's accountability, and that we can come before you again and say, guess what? They've done what they've promised. Let them move forward. Because last time, it was just card blank, and now I've spent the better part of three years fighting them. I'm tired of fighting them, doesn't mean I will stop fighting them, but I've had enough. And I kindly ask that you guys do something to help the neighborhood residents over this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Excuse me. Can you point out on this map where you live?
I'm right here, and the diesel generators that we're talking about are right here. I'm right here, and this is within a hundred feet of my house.
Okay.
Attorney Aliades, I'll let you respond to him before I go further to anybody else who wants to speak for, after the public.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I'll let you respond to his questions, then after that, I'm going to go back to anybody else who's here on behalf of the public who wants to speak.
Very good.
So, I'll just let you speak on behalf of his questions, then I'll go back and, because it's still open up to the public at this time.
So, to begin with, Mr. Forts came with a laundry list of complaints over a three-year period. He took some cheap shots at me along the way. He never once, and he knows where I live and what my address is and what my telephone number is, never once called me to file a complaint of any kind, or asked me why something like that happened over a three-year period. To my knowledge, and I'll let the Markley people answer the question, but I can do it for you right now, to my knowledge, never once did he call the Markley people to answer any of these questions, or, or raise his complaints and his, his problems. And thirdly, Mr. Mark, uh, excuse me, Mr. Forts doesn't understand that in most of the matters that he was just trying to complain to you about, there are matters that are not specifically within the jurisdiction of this board. That's why we have a city, that's why we have a building commissioner, that's why we have heads of various departments. I never, I never did hear a single thing from him with reference to calls he made incessantly to this department, that department, to that. Nobody. He complained to nobody. He kept a great record of all of these things, but to complain to nobody. And maybe, maybe some of these things weren't exactly on the plans. I want somebody to show me when somebody has brought before you plans and specifications for a project of this magnitude that weren't completed, or were completed exactly to the letter to what they are. Which brings me to the next subject matter. We have a building commissioner, and as a matter of fact, the building commissioner and the people in his department, the sewer department, the fire department, and all these other departments probably spent more time on the Markley property the last three years than they have in any and every other property in the city of Lowell, going over things, looking at things, making adjustments along the way based on, on what was found. As we all know, especially on a fourteen-acre site, when you're trying to make plans and trying to get things done, and they just had a relatively brief opportunity to try to get all of the things from day one set up the way they should be set up. all of the things from day one set up the way they should be set up, so adjustments had to be made along the way. And the records would show that whether it be the generators, whether it be water, whether it be sewer or whatever, that every time that maybe some modification, change, or adjustment was made, the materials were brought, the requests were brought, the permits were granted by the building commissioner, the fire department, or whoever it was along the way, which, as you well know, is something that is within the purview and the power of the building commissioner to do, and that's why they do that. If Mr. Forts had had to bring to you all of his complaints, every time he had one, and put it on, the onus on you people, who really have, in most cases, nothing more than the authority to turn this over to the building commissioner or the appropriate department for the complaint, then, then he could have been here at every one of your meetings and gone through the same half-hour litany that he just went through now. That never, ever, ever happened. And let me just point out one other thing in the council chambers. Pardon me, I look around, there is not another soul here other than the board, my people with me, and the Forts family. To listen to him speak, this neighborhood is outraged, or should be outraged. To listen to him speak, this neighborhood has been ruined, and, and God-awful things have happened, and the world is going to come to an end. That is clearly not the case, there is not a soul here. This is a public hearing, it's properly noticed, everyone in that neighborhood had the ability to, to come here this evening and, and join in on his complaints. Mrs. Page was here, I wondered if she was here on behalf of the neighborhood or the city or whatever, she was not. That's the city, there is a city representative for that neighborhood, I've never heard a thing from any of those people either. But this much I will do for Mr. Forts, if he would like to give me a written copy of all of his notes and questions, et cetera, I would certainly take them up. I'll take them up myself, I'll take them up with the Markley people. If they're legitimate complaints, we would certainly work on them. I don't think that he, I'd be surprised if he expected this board to be able to do that. But the bottom line here is, we have a wonderful project, it's already shown how, how great it is, it's already transformed this neighborhood, and I said it in my opening spectacularly, and I'll repeat it again now, so, but to listen to Mr. Forts, you think, my God, they've torn the place apart, and there's, there's terrible things going on all over the place? Balderdash, as far as I'm concerned. So, that's my answers now, if you want some answers from my folks on some of his physical questions he might have asked, if there, and again, my, my hearing, and I, and that part of it's pretty good, is that 90% of the complaints he made were not within the jurisdiction of this board with reference tonight, to tonight's site plan hearing. So, I'm going to continue to stay and listen and answer as I can along the way, and obviously my folks are here to answer any other questions the board may have along the way as well. I should also say, the last thing that Mr. Forts said three years ago when we left the meeting, having gone through the same litany in advance before nothing was ever done, was if you buy my house, we won't have any problems.
Okay, at this point in time, anybody else here want to speak? And, in regards to this project, anybody else?
May I rebut that?
I'll get back to you in a minute, I'm, I'm still open to the public. I let you start, I let him rebut, and now I keep it open to anybody else. If you want to speak again in a minute, I'm going to let you, but I'm letting it open to other people like I'm required to do by law. Yes, ma'am, can you state your name and address for record?
My name is Nancy Forts, I live at 36 Iowa Street.
Thank you.
And I had a couple of questions about these plans that you were talking about. First of all, the swing gate, that it's on Prince Ave, obviously. When it swings in, you're going to want people not to park there. Are you still going to allow people to park along your fence going up toward Iowa Street? Because I am reinterating from what was said before. When the fence was put on Prince Ave, you wiped out parking spaces for the people that live on Prince Ave, and it's a very congested street. There's people, they have two, three cars on that street in each apartment, and it's hideous trying to get through sometimes. Now, also too, in the winter, it's very difficult for fire trucks to get up on Iowa Street because of the parking down there, and because spaces were taken away when you put your fence up, and there's no parking signs there. And also, I would like to know what you're going to do with the snow when it snows. Are you going to completely take this away from that area? Because that's only going to make the way to get through even smaller. And the other question I have refers to your site plan. You talk of length of removed stone walls under relevant regulation governing permits from the Lowell zoning ordinance, section 11.4, site plan review. Right after the section of 11.4.10, it says, "The decision number one, minimize the volume cut and fill the number of removed trees six-inch caliber or larger, the length of removed stone walls." What I'd like to know is what stone walls you're talking about. And also, that's the end of my questions about the plan, but I abut that property directly. And whether there's other people in the neighborhood that are complaining about this or not, I have put up for three years, I have put up with big mounds of dirt, and when the wind blows, now your site plan calls for wetting down those piles of dirt, never was done. The wind blows, I couldn't open my window on the north side or my back door to get air in the house. And then when these contractors came, they took giant, and I mean giant boulders out of the ground from that, they took a dump truck, the trailer truck, dump truck, and they lifted it and let it boom, right behind my back door. And my property is only about five or six feet from where they were dumping these boulders. And it shook my whole house. And I've been, I'm there all day long, and I went through this. And also, when they flattened out after they got done digging and putting their pipes in for drainage or whatever they were doing, they had this big, giant vibrating machine that again vibrated, vibrated my house for eight hours, and it felt like an earthquake was going on. These properties are old there, they don't need to be vibrated all day long. And also, when they put the security fence in, DigSafe was not notified where there was a sewer pipe, and there was a sewer pipe, they nicked it or they did something to it and caused backup in the sewer. And that had to be alleviated, which it is now by the city, they're moving the pipe over. And the last and the most offensive thing, and if you live there and you had your windows open in the summer, and you had a fan in the window because you don't have central air conditioning, when those generators go on, that fume is sucked right into my house. And even on days, and I have a log of this, so if you want to see it anytime, I've got it. Where you've had the window closed, it was the 5th of April, and it wasn't warm enough, and that smell came right in the house, and it went from 7:30 in the morning at least till 2 o'clock in the afternoon, and was making me nauseated. I went out at 2:00 to go to a birthday party, and when I came home around 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock, the generators were off. Now, in your original site plan, you have the generators on the other side by Hales Brook. Why they're over there, I don't know. And the, you know, the three years has been horrible as far as Markley being my neighbor. If you lived directly on the property, you would know what I was talking about. You do not. And I don't, you know, maybe other people aren't here, but I'm the one that's directly affected. I'm retired, I'm home all day, every day, having to put up with dust, fumes, you know, and it's, and I have called people, I have got nowhere. So thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else want to speak in regards to this project? Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, so we'll hear back from you.
So, as he was saying, he said that, you know, three years ago, we had a conversation. Three years ago, as I made mention, and you're more than welcome to go and look, I wasn't here because, as I made mention to, the original site plan I was fine with. It was the modifications that happened after the fact and his misleading the neighborhood that I wasn't fine with. Now, he's saying it's cheap shots, he's saying that, you know, we wanted the Markley Group to buy the house. Where's the proof of that? I have the proof in writing through a public records request that I gave you tonight, that he's intentionally misled you and misled the entire neighborhood. Who is the one that is making things up around here? We live there, he lives in Maine. He doesn't even live in Lowell, he lives in Maine. He might practice in Lowell, but he doesn't live here, so he's up in Maine. We live here, this is our neighborhood, this is our backyard, we're not making it up, we put up with it for three years. Now, the construction on the south side of the property is largely done. What I'm asking you to do tonight is to basically make sure that I don't have 21 diesel generators in my backyard, directly in my backyard, because the last time they came before you, there wasn't four there. So what I'm asking you to do tonight is to basically have them do it in phases where they're actually sticking to their plans. And while the situation may be fluid, and while the plans may change, Mr. Alaitis, I get that. However, at this point, we do not need more diesel generators in our backyard. That is polluting the neighborhood with noxious fumes, carbon dioxide fumes, nitrous oxide fumes, and while they're Tier 2 residential generators, I get that, however, they're within 100 feet of a residential dwelling. They're not supposed to be the way they are, they're actually supposed to have a higher smoke stack to make sure that the smoke gets mitigated above the property lines, they don't. It sits in a cul-de-sac right there and gases out our entire south side neighborhood. As somebody, I don't know who it was from the board, did take a look around the south side of the property, when you looked at the south side of the property, you might have noticed you had to go up a hill to go up to the access road. When you went around the access road, you noticed that you were still looking at hilled properties because we sit up. That whole area to the south and to the east sits up. The only way that that smoke can escape, based on the current smoke stacks that they have there, is to go to the west. When does a wind come from the east? We're not along the seacoast, we don't get an easterly wind. Basically, we've put up with a lot in the last three years. I'm not asking you to turn back time, but I'm making you aware of what we've been through. Basically, what I'm trying to do now is to stop any more fumes from coming into my, my house, and then having those diesel generators where they're supposed to be. And I think the only way to do that is to basically do this in phases. They have utilities they want to put in on the eastern side of the property, and they want to do a loop around with the sewer system and the parking lot, I think for the Conservation Commission. Have them do all that, have them do all the utilities that they want to do. That whole northern side of the property, all those 21 diesel generators, I'm not sure how they went from 30 to 21, if they don't plan on using all the square footage, I don't know, but that was a change as well. I just want you guys to slow it down to make sure that what they say before you now is exactly the way it goes. If the situation changes and they don't need building four after that, then that's fine. I just want to make sure that those diesel generators stay where they were supposed to be all along. That is my biggest complaint at this point. Yes, have I been before, other meetings before this, saying, hey, you need to think about this? They did need to think about it, and they didn't think about it, and that's the reason why more problems have happened for the neighborhood. It's not overall doom and gloom. I did compliment them twice tonight, I don't know if Mr. Alaitis couldn't hear it or didn't hear it, but that entryway, that's nice, that looks very nice what they did with it when they did get ownership of it. I'm still not happy that they did get it, but they did, they won it fair and square, and that's the end of it. The landscaping on the western side of the property is phenomenal, but again, that's what their clients see, so of course it needs to look phenomenal. That's their potential clients. The rest of the neighborhood got left behind. We had overgrown weeds until recently. Where's the rest of the landscaping? And the other thing that I want to point out is the facade work that you're seeing down here. It was supposed to be award-winning. The facade work only goes around, if you came around the backside of the property, only goes two panels in on the south side of the property, and then we're left looking at the original building, the way they built it. Why doesn't the neighborhood get uplifted with the rest of the facade work that the public gets to see when they go and visit them as a prospective client? We're just asking for what they promised all along, what Mr. Alaitis told us. I had a phone conversation actually with him, and it got nowhere, which is the reason why I stopped talking to him, because when we were going over the sale of the Prince Ave and Markley Way property, he asked, what would, what would be done to best appease me, not taking that property? Well, of course, that wasn't the solution he was looking for, so why would he think we would continue dialogue? I'm just, at the point, when I finally got my hands on that document that I brought to you tonight, that email, it was three hours before the final sale of that property to be voted on by the city council. Even the city of Lowell held it back from me. Now, I just want to make you aware that this is what we're dealing with. He might say that, you know, I'm out to get them, it's just been a long road. If they had done what they originally did, none of this would have happened, everybody would have been happy. It's the constant changes. I'm just asking you to please slow them down. I'm not saying, don't allow it, let them do it, but do it in phases where, especially those diesel generators, go where they were supposed to be to begin with. That's all I'm asking. If you can do that, I would be very much appreciative. It's just asking for accountability at this point, because as I've proven tonight to you, there's a trust issue.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public want to speak? Anybody else? Anybody else? Anybody else? Okay, if there are nobody else in the public, at this time, I'll turn it over to the board members. Any of the board members have any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Fisher.
All right. The, if, Mr. Laitis, if we could go over the, and looking at the plans earlier, the landscaping on the south side that's being proposed, if we could get a little bit more detail on that, and then also, and, you know, we've seen a lot of what's happened over there, and it's amazing from an engineering perspective what can be done, just as a, as a mitigating factor, is there anything that can be done? It was an interesting comment with the smoke stacks and the level and the height, when you look at it lower and then the residence higher, that's an interesting observation. Curious if there's anything from a mitigating perspective as to what can be done with that, because I think that's, I mean, I think that's a legitimate observation.
Oh, absolutely. I'm Luke Kipfer.
Do you just have to state your name for the record, I'm sorry?
Yes, Luke Kipfer with the Markley Group.
Thank you, Luke.
As part of, all these, all these generators that are on-site now have been permitted with a MAS DEP.
Yeah, and, yeah.
Just part of that permit approval process is a dispersion analysis that they go through, and they actually model the generators, and they identify every particulate matter that comes out of the generator and where that goes. So the stack height was actually set, we have a third-party engineering consulting group that we do all our generator permitting through. The stack height was actually set by that group as the optimal height for be able to disperse, you know, the contaminants coming out of the generator, so. With that, they knew the elevation of the wall, they knew the elevation of the surrounding houses, they knew, you know, they get pretty in-depth with these things. So I, we can, more than happy to go back and talk to them about it, but, I mean, they, they give these specifications to us, and we have to order the generators to meet those MAS DEP codes.
Sure.
So those, the generator stack heights, you know, they're specially designed for those generators in that location with that adjacent.
Right, no, and to a point, I understand that, the way it's not really within our realm to insist something have to be a certain way, there has to be certain standards that have to be met, and I understand that, but I think that's an interesting observation, and I certainly would expect that you would at least explore that and see with, with that... With, with that in mind, you know, I, they take a lot of things into consideration, but with, with the, with the added consideration that, geez, you know, when you take into account the elevation with the resident, the homes being a lot higher than, than the diesel units, and then the stacks, really then, in that case, the stacks aren't really way up above the homes, they're, you know, so, it's just an interesting observation, and I don't plan, I don't claim to be an expert on, on how you design that, but I, I think as I sit here, and I listen, I hear that concern, it, it seems to me that that...
And just for a note, we did have Eric Schlegel, Jose, one of the building inspectors, and the health inspector were on-site last week, and we actually ran both generators for them, and they stood on the hill.
Yeah.
So, I mean, they might be able to inform you on what, how they felt, the noise level and the fumes and things where that were.
Right.
But they, they actually heard a complaint, came on-site.
Yep.
We ran both generators for them, they stood up there, and, you know, we haven't heard anything since then from them, so I'm assuming they don't have any issues with that.
Christine, do you have any, any, did they give any feedback on that?
I was not given any information related to that type of it, so I'm not sure.
Okay, what?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I understood, okay. And then, can we, can we go through the landscaping, because I know that it looks like there's quite a bit of landscaping being proposed on the top of that retaining wall? Can we go over that landscaping on that south side?
Sure.
Yeah. Yes. Does it, the microphone again there, please? Thank you very much.
Sure.
Sure, the green light's on, a little amplified, thank you.
Yes, so, yeah, the green light is on?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so, I think, my understanding is that there's still some work being phased in that area, and maybe, Luke, you want to talk more about that?
Yeah, and actually, he did point out that the security fence isn't complete in that area.
Right.
And obviously, the security fence, we have to dig footings and things like that, so the landscaping hasn't been completed because the security fence hasn't been completed.
Right, so it's just a matter of phasing and, and sequencing of...
Now, in relation to the site plan that we're actually reviewing here this evening with the addition of, of the fourth building, from a phasing perspective, where do you see that then in a timeline as far as getting that south side completed?
That was actually identified by the Conservation Commission as something that they wanted for us to expedite, so that would be done next year, the south side landscaping. There's certain aspects that we can't do, just because when we build out that big building, there are some underground utilities that we have to do, fiber optics and underground duct banks and things like that. So, there's certain parts directly adjacent to the road, we would like to defer, just because we know when we do build, build the big building, we're going to have to dig that up to marry these utilities again, but certainly, the landscaping directly on the fence line.
You're talking about this one right here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can be taken care of.
Can, can we get some detail, would you mind going over then the, what the final landscape is going to look like?
So, I can take a look at... So, I believe you can refer to sheet 2L404?
I believe that would be correct, rather than, I guess I can open it up.
The trees are going to go there, right there.
Yeah, no, is it, is it possible to put up on the easel, or is, so, so everybody can see it? I know it's not a, it's not a board, but...
There's a couple of trees there.
Sure. Yeah.
And I'm sorry, and I know it's going to be tough if we have the microphone, I know that would, because what happens is anybody, anybody viewing this at home, they came here without the microphone.
Thank you, that would be really helpful, thank you. So, yes, so, for the most part, we are planting basically a screen of evergreens, so it will act as a visual buffer year-round, and it's a combination of pines, busses, and I think some firsts, and then we have some deciduous trees, but they're going to be a little bit down the hill, because as was mentioned, that this is sloping down. So, I think that the main approach is to provide a visual buffer year-round, and these trees grow relatively fast. I think I can double-check on the plant list, but I believe that we're specifying that it needs to be tall over there.
At, at, at the time of planting? Yes, yeah, okay, yeah.
Which, which is a substantial height. Typically, on large projects like this, we specify something more than the plant to support height, so we're going with something bigger to provide more instant effect. And the same thing is here along this, we're doing basically the same treatment, mixture of different evergreen plants, so also it looks more naturalistic, so it's not just like a, you know, real wall, but it looks a little bit better. So, I think that's kind of the main approach. I'm not sure what more I can tell you, and we'll be providing more screening over here as well.
Right, and I noticed that on the top of the wall, it looks like, is that correct?
Kind of continues there, so it's again, the same, the same approach of providing the majority of evergreen, but prior to this, our ideas of evergreen trees to make it look interesting year-round, my screening, and then we blend in some deciduous trees that kind of looks more like this part of the country, you get kind of mixed forest, so that's what we're trying to do.
Okay, and then, so, an anticipated timeline then on this?
Next year.
Next year, okay, so...
And, yeah, and I would say like, the typical planting time for a time is either, you know, in the spring or in the fall. I mean, you can plant in the summer, but it's less likely, especially when you plant larger, especially evergreens, they don't take that off, so actually, fall is probably the best time to plant them, from our cultural point of view, but obviously, however the...
And then what's the timeline on building number four to be constructed?
We would like the fire or, you know, the building that's going to be built for this year.
And then, and then anticipated completion?
You know, probably, we'd be shooting for CO, building four, probably late September, early October next year.
Of next year? And then if you did a fall planting, would coincide with...
Right, the turnover, you know, occupancy of that building for...
Okay. Because what I, what I'm just thinking is if we did, at the very least, if we did a, a condition of the timing of that, in the sense of a phase, so it, then it provides some utility for planning and development to say, you know, we've gone beyond the, the time, and then you would be forced to come before this board again, unable to meet the condition. I think that would probably, that would probably make some sense, and then we can have some ideas, you know, why, why hasn't the timeline been met, and what, and it gives some accountability to, I think, the neighbors as well. I think that would be, I think that, you know, again, there's some things that are outside of our purview, but I, I think from a reasonable perspective, you know...
Yeah, we don't have corrections.
Yeah, yeah.
You can be committed to those findings for fall.
And then again, I, and I would be looking for, at the very least, and it's, it's a loose condition, I, you know, I've been on this long enough, I understand that, but to go back to engineering and say, is there a way to mitigate the, the effects of the smoke stack in any way? Again, I hadn't thought of the height situation, you know, it is an interesting observation, that's all I can say, and, and just approach in that, in that way, from an engineering perspective. I'm not an engineer, and, yeah, I don't think there's anybody in the room here that can, can really comment on that. And at the end of the day, they may come back with, you know, it meets the requirements, and it's fine, but I think we're obligated to, if something appears to be reasonable, request is to take a look at that, and, again, at the end of the day, when we go home, nobody's going home to that, to the homes there, except for the people over here, so I mean, I understand that. On the, on the site plan for the, for the building, and thank you very much on this, I appreciate that. On the, the building number four, I do, again, I think I commented at pre-application, if you could just go over the, what, the units on the roof again, though, as far as how that's going to tier. What I do like is, is again, it's, it's a massive structure, and by having a different level, it helps to bring that structure down a bit, but just like to get a better feel for the, the units on the, on the roof.
What this, what we're representing is, you know, as the worst case, the engineers are still, the engineers are still vetting the best solution for cooling of building four and building potential of using some of the cooling for the future of building one. So, what we, what we showed, showing today is the biggest equipment that they will be putting on the roof for that, for that, financially, they are vetting, and it's to see how they want to do it. Also, at this point, it'd be best to show you what the largest work that we've got this year.
Okay.
So, one of these takes care of building four, the other two, the future...
So, that's, that's, for lack of a better term, worst-case scenario, and then anything might be, if anything, it might be smaller. Yep.
Yeah, and we're not far enough advanced in the design yet to come up with acoustic studies for that, but, I mean, there is also a potential for having some sort of auditory screen wall surrounding that equipment too, depending on how that comes back.
Okay, yeah, I mean, is that, my biggest fear is that, that's not going to exceed the height of the existing building, so as long as we keep that tiered, that tiered design, I think is... Cooling is not really visible very much, you know...
And that's not the perfect elevation, so you never get that view.
Right.
From the corner, because important is, if you're up there, this is more...
The view, you would mean, yeah.
Of that equipment.
Yeah.
And then if you drive onto the site, this is the view you would have to have.
Right, right, okay, all right. And then, the, just probably to attorney Aliades, I just, I understand you went to conservation? So, I just want to know what the results were from conservation, what some of the conditions were?
Did we have all the, did we have all the...
Oh, yeah, no, I have, yeah, I have that here. So, the, the, there were only two, the commission had two special conditions, so there was this, the two, right? This sequencing for the landscape, should we done for?
We can answer that. So, the order of conditions is actually a document that's curated by the state, and then we have standard...
Right, there's the boilerplate...
And then we have like a 10 standard conditions, and then the two with specials, so the, the two special conditions would be equivalent to conditions you put on a site plan.
Okay, so there was, other than the, the boilerplate conditions, these are the only two?
Those are the only two objects, specific conditions the Conservation Commission put on this.
Okay, yeah. So, you know, in their way, it's typically trying to address the same...
The same issues were raised last week as part of that, so they were incorporated as part of...
No, and as the land use boards, I think that's, again, trying to balance, balance that.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, good, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Mr. Siskin, Mr. Malovich, any questions?
Not really.
Okay, bud? Dick, any questions?
No, I think the, the two main issues that the butter had raised were the conditions of the landscaping and the generators, and it seems that those have been addressed by the Conservation Commission. So, that being said, you know, I would be satisfied with that.
I don't have any questions at this time. After having the pre-app and being up there for the site and what we've heard this evening, most of my questions have been answered, so. So, what's the request of the board? They're here for a site plan only?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan with the following conditions, that the, the applicant will complete the landscaping on the south side of the site as proposed in the landscaping plan. With, and I guess, to be consistent with conservation within the first, within the, within a year's time from, from approval, and the, the applicant shall explore engineering options to perhaps mitigate effects of smoke stacks. And again, that may result in, in what's already been done, but I, I just think, going back to it with that, with that in mind, understanding the height, and, and see what can be done. And that would really be the only, the only other conditions, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman.
Okay, I'm telling, so the motion was made, was it second by you, Mr. Siskin?
Yes.
Okay. Motion's made in second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, chair vote yes, so the site plan is approved, formed in favor, and none against. Good luck, we wish you well. Luke, can you give this to Mr. Aliades for me? Thank you.
I think we speak loud enough up here, Mr. Aliades. Usually we have something to say, we're pretty much straightforward.
It's just that they're like these funny pockets there, trying to fit into it. I mean, you know, be my guest. Like I said, I'm kind of too short for it.
Thank you very much, I didn't get it.
Good night.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along on the agenda, we have other business from, from any of the board members, what updates from other boards that they're on? Mr. Fisher, I'll start with you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, last evening, the Northern Mill 6 Council of Governments met for, after the summer hiatus, and the, they had election of officers, and I have been elected as the treasurer again, I think this is my ninth year as the, as the treasurer.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And also, the annual meeting has been set for October 17th at the Tewksbury Country Club, and actually, Eileen Donahue, the city of Lowell's city manager, will be the guest speaker, so looking forward to that. If anybody is interested in going, I will make sure we get a mailing of, of invitations. The event begins, the reception is at 6:30, and the dinner at 7:00, and then the speaking engagement at 7:30.
Thank you. Anything else?
And then, Mr. Chairman, it was in the newspaper, but it was a matter of, of discussion at the NEMCOG meeting, if, and I'm sure most people who are interested in the Rourke Bridge are probably aware of this, but MasDART announced that they've selected HNTB as the consultant for the Rourke Bridge Replacement Project. The firm will be responsible for the design and permitting of the project under a contract valued at $5 million. And MasDART made a presentation to the city council where they stated that the project is at least eight and a half years away from completion, and the project cost is estimated at $70 million, but, you know, we're at least getting to the next phase, and I know it's frustrating, but projects such as this, and there's so much demand for funds for these types of projects throughout the Commonwealth, at least we're, we're moving, we're moving it along. And I keep saying it'll be within my lifetime, so I, I'm hoping I live at least another eight and a half years, Mr. Chairman.
That way.
So, and that's my report of, I guess, report of progress, I'll call that, how's that, Mr. Chairman?
Anything to step forward, right?
Yes.
Any other board members have any comments to bring forward? If not, we can entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? Motion made in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair vote yes. We have adjourned. Good luck, and thank you, everyone.